Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council meeting for October 6, 2020. Do want to remind everyone, this is a remote meeting due to the COVID-19 restrictions. There is a live broadcast of our meeting this evening on Kent TV 21, as well as the City of Kent Facebook page and our YouTube page, which is also Kent TV 21. With that, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. And Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Troutner?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Cor?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas? Councilmember Thomas? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I see Councilmember Thomas here. He was on mute, so we will make sure that he's included in that roll call.
Absolutely.
And the next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes this evening from council administration or staff?
No changes this evening, Mayor, but I did want to make sure that everybody is looking at the updated agenda and packet that we sent yesterday that added item 9B, the sales and use tax for affordable housing and services, a topic which the city council has discussed at two prior meetings.
All right. Thank you for that. So a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as stands.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the agenda as it stands.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed?
All right. Motion carries seven zero. Agenda stands. We are going to move on to public recognition, item number four. And to start us off tonight, we've got a fun celebration of one of our amazing employees. So every month, City of Kent employees get together and they nominate one of their coworkers as employee of the month, and it can be based on a special project that's been done or just how in their day-to-day work they exemplify and honor the mission, vision, values, and goals for the City of Kent. I think it's safe to say that our October winner for Employee of the Month really hits all of those categories. I am pleased to announce that Jan Hyatt is our October Employee of the Month. Jan was hired on March 2, 2015, as an administrative assistant in the Human Resources Department. On December 1, 2020, Jan was promoted to the Training Development Coordinator. And that would be on December 1, probably 2019, since we are not quite to Christmas yet this year. In March of 2018, her position was reclassified to the Training and Development Analyst. In February of this year, she moved to the Risk Division and became the Risk Management Risk Management Training Analyst as a part of the Human Resources Department Reorganization. Jan has taken on and successfully overseen the Shared Work Program for our Thrill Oak Park staff. It's been extremely important during COVID and all of the things that have come with that. This is an entirely new program, and she's worked through the challenges prevented by massive unemployment fraud and employment security to ensure that our employees have been properly compensated during this difficult time. Jan is always willing to assist with a project and has taken on several in recent months, always doing the work with high quality and done on time. One of the nominations Jan received stated, "With recent departmental changes, Jan has continued to demonstrate her commitment to teamwork. Her encyclopedic knowledge of city process and systems have been a major asset to our department." A second nomination noted Jan's consistent approach to her job makes her an Employee of the Month all the time, but especially this year when so many factors collided to make her current job particularly challenging. Jan continuously embraces our values, and in October, we celebrate her as our Employee of the Month. So congratulations, Jan. Much, much deserved, for sure. Next, we will move on to our proclamation. We have a proclamation this evening. And this one is, "Near and dear to my heart, is a former Arts Commission member and definite fan and supporter of this program. Tonight, we have a proclamation proclaiming the month of October be recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by the nation's 120,000 nonprofits, art organizations, the National Endowment of the Arts, the National Endowment for Humanities, the nation's 4,500 local arts agencies, and the Arts and Humanities Councils of the 50 states and the six U.S. jurisdictions. And whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, and whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American, and whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in our lives of our families, our communities, and our country, and whereas the nonprofit arts industry also strengthens our economy by generating 135 billion in total economic activity annually, 22.3 billion in government revenue, and by supporting the full-time equivalent of 4.1 million jobs. Whereas the creative economy drives tourism and commerce, supports American workers, and makes up 4.5% of the annual GDP, proposed federal legislation titled the Create Act and the Place Act would support economic development of the creative economy. Whereas the Kent Arts Commission was established on October 20 of 1975 and has been serving the City of Kent with high-quality visual and performing arts programs and cultural opportunities for 45 years. Now therefore, I, Mayor Dana Ralph, to hereby proclaim the month of October as National Arts and Humanities Month in Kent, Washington, and call upon our community members to celebrate, promote, and take action for arts and culture in our nation and to recognize the substantial contributions the Kent Arts Commission has made to our city." I think this is also a very good reminder that our cultural arts, our artists have suffered greatly through COVID. If you think about all the performances that have been canceled, all the galleries that have not been able to be open, it's really important that we acknowledge the hardship that's been created, and also I would like to challenge our fellow residents to really find a way that you can support the arts in this time, whether it's buying a book, buying a painting, finding some way to attend a virtual performance. I think it's really, really important. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Rhonda Billerbeck. All things creative for the City of Kent.
Thank you, Mayor Ralph. And thank you so much for recognizing the value of the arts and culture in our community by proclaiming October as National Arts and Humanities Month. I'm happy to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Kent Arts Commission and to report that the Kent Arts Commission is continuing their work during the pandemic. We recently installed eight new art wraps on traffic signal control boxes throughout the city, as well as a series of outdoor sculptural exercise equipment at Morale Meadows Park, our online platform for sharing arts and creativity, KentCreates.com. Just wrapped up quarantine art exhibits with nearly 70 entries, paintings, drawings, photographs, poems, and more from Kent residents. We're also continuing to support local artists and organizations through our grant programs with the deadline for our 2021 Community Arts Support Program applications coming up on October 23. The Arts Commission is also strategically planning and preparing behind the scenes to begin bringing our community back together in person for events and concerts as soon as we can. And as you know, the arts and humanities benefit communities and individuals in so many ways, ranging from improving academic performance in students and benefiting the local merchants to sparking innovation and inspiring civic engagement. The arts promote true prosperity in the deepest depths. They're fundamental to our humanity. The arts help us express our values, build bridges between cultures, and bring us together regardless of ethnicity, religion, or age. When times are tough, the arts are balm for the ache. Unfortunately, as you mentioned, our current tough times have been particularly hard on artists and arts organizations. According to a survey of 120,000 arts organizations throughout the nation, the COVID pandemic has resulted in 13.9 billion, with a B, in lost revenue. In Washington State alone, the impact on arts organizations has been 32.4 million, with 97% of our arts organizations statewide having canceled events, resulting in lost attendance of about 2 million people. In a time when we need arts more than ever, our artists and our organizations are struggling. So thank you again for your ongoing leadership in recognizing and supporting the value of the arts in Kent. And I do, like you, hope the residents will celebrate October by listening to some music, looking at the art around them, settling in with a good book, or expressing their own creativity in some way. So on behalf of the Kent Arts Commission, thank you again.
Thank you so much, Rhonda. I do think it's so important. I love that idea of it being the balm for the ache, right? We all are feeling so much and having an outlet, whether it be stopping at a stoplight and seeing our amazing traffic boxes. It's just that smile, that quick smile that makes you think about something else, or reading a good book or listening to music, something that you've never listened to before. It really does make a difference in our community, and it shows our artists that we value them and are supporting them. So thank you so much, and thanks for keeping our Arts Commission on track and doing some creative things during this time. So appreciate it very much. Councilmember Thomas, you had a comment?
I do, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. Yeah, so my wife and I, we love those boxes. And as we're driving by those, they're so good. I have to ask, how are those applied? Are they actually painted on? Or are they somehow a decal? Or help me out here, somebody?
Yeah, I can answer. They are vinyl wrap, actually. So similar to what you would see when they wrap a bus or a car with an advertisement. It's that same kind of vinyl. So the artists that design those boxes give us a digital file, and then we work with a sign company to translate that digital file into a wrap on the box.
Can I, I don't know if you'd have this on the top of your head, but approximately, what would each one run?
In terms of the cost?
Yes, please.
They range because some of them are bigger, some are smaller. You've probably noticed some consist of multiple boxes. But I would say it's an average of about $2,000 per box. And those are designed to last about 10 years.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us tonight, Rhonda. Okay, we have an additional public recognition tonight. I want to take a few minutes to honor Council President Troutner. She's been working very hard over the last couple of years and has earned her Association of Washington City's Certificate of Municipal Leadership. AWC Certificate of Municipal Leadership recognizes mayors and council members for accomplishing training in four competency areas, and they provide elected officials with knowledge they need to effectively operate within the law, plan for the future, secure and manage funds, and foster community and staff relationships. So I want to congratulate Council President Troutner, and I'm grateful that we've got multiple folks on our council that have taken the time to earn this certification. And I do think that it makes us better leaders, helps us know where our place is and what we need to know to operate within the law and support our community. So congratulations, Council President, on your CML. All right, we are going to move now down to community events. What used to be one of our longer parts of public communications is now unfortunately shorter, but there's got to be a light at the end of this tunnel. Council President, do you have any events for us today?
Well, first of all, thank you, Madam Mayor, for that recognition. That was a big surprise this evening. I wasn't expecting that, so thank you very much. And I have nothing to report this evening, so.
Councilmember Thomas, do you have a community event? Oh, you're on mute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not have anything.
Okay. All right. Any other council members have community events? Okay, not seeing any. We will move on in our agenda to item 4C, which is our Quarterly Economic and Community Development Report. And joining us tonight is Bill Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. I am here for the economic development date for this quarter.
Bill, if you could speak up just a little bit, you're hard to hear.
First slide, please. Okay, sorry. It's the first evening. I'm trying this with the live video, and I apologize if I have trouble. Kim, can you please advance to the first slide? Thank you. So, brief update on the Small Business Emergency Grant Program. As of yesterday, we're 99.5% of the way through. Craft III has processed and dispersed at this time 304 grants out of the 307 eligible. I know it's previously been reported, and we've talked about in the past that, you know, that number would be 311. A couple of businesses have declined the award after reviewing the federal grant requirements. And some of the eligible businesses were held by one owner. So we have not elected to give more than, essentially, two grants to the same ownership if they have multiple entities or LLCs. At this point, we have deposited $1.995 million. And we're continuing to pursue the remaining three businesses on our eligibility list, encouraging them to respond to the award notice, sign the acceptance paperwork so that we can wrap up this emergency relief program. We are expecting the final report from Craft III will be shared back to the city, to myself, which I will share with, of course, with all the leadership here, with the details that elaborate on all of my past updates on the demographic information by Friday, October 16. Again, nothing much has changed in terms of the demographic breakdown since my earlier reports on this, but we've made a lot of progress since the additional funding was made available. Currently, I'm working with Kent Downtown Partnership on further CARES Act-funded relief, where we would create a contract for a grand total of $175,000 to purchase outdoor equipment for the downtown service area to set up tents and other outdoor eating equipment, I would call it, and to help facilitate businesses remaining open with the rules that are currently in place by welcoming customers outside. So we're working on that closely now. And furthermore, just a quick update on the Manufacturing Employment Retention Program that we use some CARES Act funding with early on. We put $200,000 that we matched to the $65,000 from the Port of Seattle and City of Kent's general fund, $32,000. We have full subscription to that. We've helped 10 employers and 80 residents retain their jobs. And Green River College has also created some COVID-19 safety workshops that they have been delivering. Next slide, please. So I just, I was looking back at the last update I provided counsel. And at that time, I had mentioned that roughly half of the United States was not working at that time. It's a different piece of information than the unemployment rate. The unemployment rate can sometimes be a little misleading as the difficulties that we face. Recently, for instance, the unemployment rate is down, but that's for the wrong reason. Our labor force participation has shrunk again. That's a very big macro-level picture. Zooming down a little bit, I'm sure everyone's heard about Boeing's decision to move some of the 787 work to Carolina. We had joined in with our friends in Snohomish and saying that we were better with Boeing and had been encouraging Boeing to look again at that, especially after some of the job losses that we've seen locally in the aerospace supply chain. There's been better news of late where the 737 is starting to work its way through some of the issues that have been well-publicized over the last year. And of course, the space security and defense programs of Boeing have been the big bright star and locally as the home of the Space Security and Defense Campus of Boeing. Relative to some of our neighbors with Boeing facilities, we are faring better. One thing that I'm engaged with at a regional level often is on economic development planning. And a lot of our discussions have been that the Seattle Metro prides itself on having a diverse set of industries, everything from manufacturing to software publishing to healthcare to bioscience. So if any one area hits a recession, we'll do better. We're okay overall. Another observation, though, is that perhaps we need a diversity of companies, that we shouldn't have all our eggs in the basket of a few companies, that we need to be really thinking, as we're thinking about economic recovery, about how are we encouraging the formation of smaller businesses and more of them? Next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. So one thing I had a chance to revisit, and I hope the council will indulge me with going a little bit down memory lane here. I have not talked about the Economic Development Plan in quite some time. But the gentleman who's in charge, who helped write this six years ago in the City Council passed it, Chris Meford, is very much at the center of all of the regional discussions of what is the new regional economic recovery plan will be. And revisiting that, I thought it would be sort of useful, especially where I left off on the last economic update last quarter, where I talked about the things that we had paused, the things that we were really focused on, and the things that we should be returning to in terms of our Economic Development Division work as we look forward. For those who may not recall, there's six strategies that you see enumerated on the left side of the slide. Each one of those have actions. There's about 108 of them. And as we pivot now from the mitigation work of the emergency relief work that we've been focused on, and rightly so over the last six or seven months of the economic crisis, a lot of the discussion is going towards, well, this is sort of a new normal, isn't it? And how do we, where should we be investing our time, our effort, or resources in the economic development profession to work on recovery? So I wanted to revisit our plan that is on the books. And when I look at it, you know, a lot of the stuff in it was not just the responsibility of Economic Development Division, it was citywide, departmental level work. And what have we accomplished? We've had a lot of notable completions. We've modernized our industrial zoning code. Some of the actions there called for expanding the new uses. The roundabout project and the gateways on Meeker and Fortin Willis are explicitly called out in the plan. Our branding campaigns around the Kent Valley and advertising marketing, manufacturing, things that we've been working hard on with our Lodging Tax Committee. Those are explicitly called out in our Economic Development Plan, permitting improvements, engagement on policy on workforce development at a regional level. We're highly engaged. I am on several committees. Brownfield identification, multifamily tax exemption, making back sell-in front. We have good examples. Incentivize Meeker Street. We've put that incentive in place along the corridor. We are building as a city our social media presence. We've started work, although there's work still to be done on finishing the Kent Valley Loop Trail. We have leveraged some LIDs, and there's some discussions about LIDs in the future. Some things we haven't done yet. We haven't developed a maker space. We haven't, beyond the typical support for the Small Business Development Center, I can't point to very many initiatives that have been explicitly aimed at the entrepreneur. And notably absent from our plan is any discussion of micro enterprise and commercial affordability. And I think one of the things the crisis is teaching us and telling us is that that's an underdeveloped part of the infrastructure of economic development, not just in Kent, but regionally, and something that ought to be something that we should focus on more into the future. Also, you know, some of the other things that are perhaps less relevant now are, you know, we've talked about this before, is the RecTech cluster. The cluster growth and retention is really not what we thought it was back in 2014. It's really been around to our It's really been around our opportunities around the growing space industry. So looking to that, looking to STEM education, looking to those items in four, five, and six, where perhaps we've done, there's things that are relevant to our current challenges and are left undone, I think, is where there are many good ideas amongst the hundred and eight. We couldn't get to all of them in the last six years. Remarkably, we've done a lot, but there's still more to do. And I think going forward, looking forward, it's a nice thing to do after this year, going to be returning to some of those actions. Next slide, please. So also wanted to give an update. The request for qualifications for the Needon Avenue north part of the assemblage, the manufacturing campus, got some coverage in the press, in the Peter Sound Business Journal, and also at the manufacturing newsletter. We had four responses. The selection panel met last Friday. After reviewing them, two of the four development teams have been asked to proceed and to schedule an interview with our selection panel. So that is being scheduled for next week. Also, I'd want to say at this time that we were reaching an important marker and decision point for both the city and the hotel development group, Braintree Hospitality. On the upcoming October twelfth, Braintree Hospitality owes to the city a fully executed Hilton Garden Inn franchise agreement. Hilton Garden Inn is awarded at this location a franchise agreement, but it has not been executed as Braintree Hospitality has been struggling with some of the construction cost estimates coming back in from contractors at this location and the strong headwinds of the hospitality industry. They went through some difficulties this year with their revenue, as many hotel groups went through massive revenue issues. They had to avail themselves of federal help. They had to furlough construction workers, construction team specialists. And they brought those folks back on and they have been looking at it. But getting the project to a point where it pencils is something that seems difficult at the moment. But we have some deadlines to revisit and the fork in the road pretty soon. So the city's looking at that and I would come back to council to discuss at a future date. But wanted to highlight the ongoing challenges in the hospitality industry more broadly. And more specifically on this site, some of the difficulties Braintree has been having in terms of figuring out path forward. Next slide, please. And with that, thank you. Open myself to questions.
All right. Thank you for that update, Bill. Council, do you have any questions for Bill? All right, I'm not seeing any. Thank you for keeping us on track, Bill. It's been certainly not a year that any of us have planned, but I feel like we have made significant strides in supporting our business community and also looking forward at the same time. So really grateful for the work that you and Michelle are continuing to do. So thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we are going to move on to item number five on the agenda, which is reports from council and staff. It's an opportunity to hear about the work that is being done on our residents and businesses' behalf at the regional level. All of our council members sit on regional committees, making sure that Kent's voice is being represented around the region. I will start with a very brief report. As many of you know, on September twenty-ninth, I transmitted my proposed budget to the city council. So there's been significant amount of work already underway in making sure that we're getting council's questions answered and presentations being prepared for that. The other thing that has been, I've spent a majority of my time on, especially in the last week or so, is fifteen-ninety. That's the housing legislation that council has heard about several times and is actually on the agenda tonight. What I do want to report back specifically is that I've been involved in conversations with the King County Executive, multiple King County council members and mayors and council members from surrounding cities on exactly what this means and some strategies around it. I, so a couple of things, I guess I want to stress. I believe, and I strongly believe that our council understands the need for housing for our most vulnerable, right? That's our population in that zero to thirty range. The proposal that the executive transmitted to King County Council does have a plan for that. And the conversations that have been occurring is how do cities participate in that plan? How do we make sure that our voices are heard? What the needs are in Kent are very different from the needs in Redmond and making sure that we're all being represented in those conversations. So as that does come to council tonight for deliberation, we can have further conversation. But I do really want to stress that there has been, at least in the last five or six days, some really robust regional conversation that I'm actually very, very glad to see. We do have some opportunity to make sure that Kent's voice is heard in that and that we have some say in projects that are being located in Kent using Kent dollars. So I know that Marina is going to speak to that in a little bit, but I will tell you, I had meetings on that probably the last five out of six days, including over the weekend. So a lot of work being done on that. With that, I will turn it over to our Chief Administrative Officer, Derek Matheson, for his report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I wanted to say congratulations and thank you again to our now-retired Public Works Director, Tim LaPorte, for a fabulous thirty-one-year career with the city of Kent. Deputy Director Chad Baron took over as interim director last Thursday. And we're looking forward to seeing more of Chad and working with him more closely. Also wanted to let the council know that we are launching our race and equity training for managers and supervisors starting tomorrow. The executive leadership team went through the training at the end of July. And after the managers and supervisors, we'll roll that out to our frontline employees. Next week at your Committee of the Whole meeting, we'll give you an update on our federal CARES. That's the coronavirus relief grant and how we've put that to use here in Kent. But I did want to highlight for council that we're planning to purchase and install two permanent electronic reader boards at the new Willis Street Roundabout. And initially, those reader boards will provide information on COVID-19, including reminders about masks and good hygiene and so forth. The rest of my written report is in your packet and there is no executive session this evening. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Derek. To follow up on Derek's statement, one of the things that we've been asked to do repeatedly by both the governor and the King County Executive is to make sure as a city, we are messaging to our residents the importance of wearing masks, good hygiene, all of those kinds of things. We know that the best way to fight coronavirus is with information. And if people are aware and reminded of doing the right thing, it's successful. So that's what a lot of those projects are going to, to make sure we're getting the word out to all of our residents. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Council President Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a workshop earlier this evening and we continue to talk about the mayor's budget proposal. And we do have a workshop coming up this Saturday from eight to five. I sit on the Regional Transit Committee and recently we had an opportunity to meet Terry White. He is the interim director for King County Metro. That committee continues to work on policy documents and service changes. And then just a reminder that the King County Metro started collecting fares again on October first. So if you use that system, which is great, just be aware that they are back to collecting fares. I also sit on the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee. And we heard from the lead program at our last meeting, they continue to face challenges due to COVID, but they're finding creative ways to provide services and shelter for people in that program. And with that, I am going to turn to my colleagues and hear what they have been up to. And I will start with Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on the Regional Water Quality Committee and our meeting is tomorrow. And I serve on the Kent's Human Services Committee and we have not had a meeting in between my last report. So I will have reports next time.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. I serve on Growth Management Planning Council. We had our meeting on September thirtieth. And it was basically a work session. We learned about what GMPC does. And just we're working on King County planning in our next meetings in December. I also serve on Pugilist Sun Clean Air Agency Advisory Council as the Chair and Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force. And we did not meet between the last two weeks. So that's all my update. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Larmer.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on the King County Affordable Housing Committee and we met on September thirtieth. We had quite a packed agenda. We reviewed our shared principles, which are going to, the intent of these is to guide the individual members of the committee, the state and local jurisdictions, state and federal participation in how we are going to fund and build forty-four thousand new housing units, new, sorry, fund, build, or preserve forty-four thousand housing units by twenty-twenty-four. One big update we got is we got a better estimate of what that actual funding need looks like. And the number that we now understand is that's going to be eighteen billion is what the revenue still needed to build what the region needs by twenty-twenty-four. In that discussion, we reviewed the ten principles. You know, interesting that one of the, one of the guiding principles is not to, not to put forward revenue sources that are going to place a disproportionate burden on low-income households. Immediately following that conversation, we went into the agenda item on fifteen-ninety. So that was a little ironic and we'll, you know, be discussing that for more in our agenda tonight. I also serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council and we are meeting this Friday.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Short report. I serve as a vice chair of the Sound City Association Pit Committee. We have a meeting on next Wednesday, so I look forward to reporting out at our following meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Thomas.
Keep going on. Thank you, Madam President. So I sit on the Peter Sound Regional Fire Authority along with Council President Troutner and Councilmember Boyce. We met on the sixteenth of September. Very little to discuss there, but we do meet again tomorrow night at five-thirty on Zoom. And then we have a very special time on the twenty-first of this month. It's going to be at three-thirty PM on Zoom instead of our normal meeting at five-thirty. So that's the biggest thing going on. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam President. The Arts Commission meets next week, Mid Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Council. What we did most, our biggest topic was the cuts making up for the money that has been lost due to COVID-19, looking at program cuts, which programs were being cut and what was it based on? Making sure that equity was considered, was it a pro, and some of it was made up by, some of the losses were made up by programs that were not yet funded. So they had been on the, they'd been chosen but hadn't received funds yet. Some of the programs were just simply, how were they performing? Were there other funding sources? Did they receive Medicaid funds? Were they eligible for that? So looking at outcomes and, as I said before, equity. So a lot of the programs, you know, it was a big slash, but still working at that and that is it. Oh, and KCD, King Conservation District, will also be meeting later this month. That's it for my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. That ends our reports, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Council President. We will move on in the agenda. Item number six is public hearing. We do not have one this evening. Item number seven is public comment. I want to remind the public that this is your opportunity to speak to the council and mayor on issues that relate to business in the city of Kent. Comments that do not relate to the business of the city of Kent are not permitted. Additionally, State of Washington prohibits people from using public comment period to support or oppose a ballot measure or candidate for office. There are multiple ways to submit comment to the council. Tonight is the first evening that we are taking those comments live. But I do want to remind people they are also welcome to submit written comments to the council at cityclerk@kentwa.gov. Can also be called in at two-five-three-eight-five-six-five-seven-two-five. Remind everyone of the ground rules. If, when you are called on, you can state your name and city of residence for the record. You do have three minutes and council, there will not be back and forth conversation. Council will be listening intently and taking notes, but not answering specific questions. With that, I am going to turn it over to our city clerk, Kim Komodo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have, the first speaker is going to be Roublay Moussaye. And then I'm going to read a comment into the record and then there will be additional speakers. So the first person is Roublay Moussaye.
Thank you. I'm based in Taquilla, but I'm speaking for businesses all over King County, including Kent. I'm with the Right to Be Bank Campaign and I'll be speaking in support of resolution on unbanked businesses. Dear Honorable Mayor, Council President, and Council Members, thank you for your consideration of this resolution. I agree that, I agree, I agree about the point Mr. Ellis made in his presentation of diversifying our local economy by encouraging small businesses to open up. This resolution is very much about ensuring our small businesses have access to banking services. We recently received data from the Washington Department of Financial Institution, which showed that twenty-five percent of licensed money transmitters are unbanked. Most of them operate in greater King County area, including Kent. The data also showed that unbanked money transmitters send money to sixty-five countries, including India, Nepal, Indonesia, France, and thirty African countries. So this is not an issue that only impacts East African immigrants. Many of these communities are represented in the diverse citizenry of Kent. We are working closely with the Department of Financial Institution to find a solution that will work for all parties, including banks. This will be a collaborative effort. Passing this resolution, passing this resolution will show the city's strong support of its immigrant community. I would like to thank Councilmember Cor, Fincher, and Boyce for their early support of this resolution and all of the council members that will vote yes today. Thank you.
Thank you. I will, I'm going to read into the record a public comment submitted by James Rushing. Hello, members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to discuss a subject that might be a beacon of light during these dark times. I represent a successful Washington-based retail cannabis company, Origins, which owns and operates stores in West Seattle and Redmond. And we wish to present some evidence and facts that we hope will stimulate a discussion amongst the council, law enforcement, the mayor's office, as well as the citizens of Kent around the matter of allowing adult-use cannabis retail businesses like ours to operate in properly zoned areas, in properly zoned areas Kent. Bring much-needed revenue to the state, county, and local tax authorities, provide additional community assistance, and reduce the occurrence of cannabis diversion in and out of Kent. First, I would like to speak of the economic impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on the state of Washington, King County, and the city of Kent. We are all aware of what the last six months has been like and we all have been directly affected by the social and economic changes that has happened since the pandemic began. But as a former professor and analytical scientist, I like to reference only the facts. I wish to explain how our group might help to quell the economic impact of this virus on the community. According to the Economic and Revenue Forecast Council, overall, the state of Washington will see a fifteen-plus percent decline in state revenues in twenty-twenty. With the King County Office of Economic and Financial Analysis reporting a twenty-seven percent decrease in taxable sales, four-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-six-hundred new unemployment claims filed in the county since March first, and a twelve-point-four percent drop in job growth just from April to May. The most recent King County economic forecast model has projected it will take to twenty-twenty-two to no longer feel the impact, the financial impact of COVID-19 on the local economy. Alternatively, in Kent, we project Origins could be worth five-hundred thousand a month to local county and state taxes. thousand a month to local county and state tax agencies, while supporting two million dollars a month in product sales and consistently employing fifty local workers. Having been deemed an essential business by the state, we could truly be an asset to the city. In addition to the potential economic impact on Origins-owned retail cannabis store would have on the city of Kent, we hope to bring some information from a peer review, from a peer, from a few peer review articles to your attention, so the council may have the most current information possible when discussing the social impact adult-use cannabis establishments have on the community. Studies have shown that recreational cannabis sales are not correlated with increases in crime. A two thousand nineteen study published in Just Quarterly had found that recreational cannabis legislation and sales had minimal to no effect on major crimes in Washington, and no statistically significant long-term effects on violent or property crime. So that is all I can get in, in the allotted three minutes. The rest of this public comment will be provided to the council in, in written form. So now I have seven people signed up to give public comment. The first person that I will call on is Komolpreet Kor Sahoda.
Hello, my name is Komolpreet, and I am from Kent. I am a part of four forty-two in South King County Eastside Mutual Aid. Four forty-two is demanding that the Kent City Council reject the so-called race and equity resolution being proposed tonight. This resolution fails to actually address racial equity in Kent, and ignores the demands of Black Indigenous People of Color youth in the city. Police Chief Rafael Padilla emphasized in a recent Kent Reporter article, that if we reduce the number of officers, there will be an impact on public safety. His suggestion that police reduction will result in a threat to public safety is not true. In reality, research shows that larger police forces do not lower crime rates, or lower, or lower the existence of crime in a community. However, larger police forces do target and criminalize Black Indigenous and People of Color communities, enforce the school-to-prison pipeline criminalizing more BIPOC youth and children, and enlarge the existence of poverty in communities. Police cannot solve the issues of our communities, especially of BIPOC communities. Instead, policing further racial harm and community trauma. This is why the city must support our demands, rather than releasing resolutions and plans that do not support our communities. Our city's resources must be used in a way that reflects the needs of our community. The Kent Police Department needs to be defunded by fifty percent. Specifically, we demand the demilitarization of the Kent Police and the elimination of the Kent School District Resource Officer Program. Using those funds, the city must reinvest in BIPOC communities, in youth, and in students. Investing in BIPOC communities should include creating alternative emergency responses that do not involve police. This way, our communities can decentralize the need for police response, and prioritize harm prevention and care. The city must invest in a participatory budget, budgeting process, so that BIPOC people most impacted by ine, by inequity can have agency in deciding where city funds go. Investing in youth and students should include increasing the city's youth and teen budget, and having Kent youth decide how those funds are used. The city should also leverage its relationship with the Kent School District to advocate for disciplinary practices that dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline. Funding for ethnic studies and a decolonized curriculum is crucial for our students' well-being as well. Show us you can do this. You can support our communities by supporting our demands and rejecting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Heaven Hamilton.
Hello, everyone. My name is Heaven. I am a member of four forty-two, and I'm also a long-term resident of Kent. I am here to speak directly to the mayor and the Kent City Council. Dana Ralph told Jason Rantz on KTH that a fifty percent cut to the Kent Police Department's budget is reckless. Dana, it is reckless to continue dismissing the demands of BIOPAC Kent residents. It is reckless to create a race and equity resolution that does not address root issues. The resolution puts forth internal efforts like racial equity training, task forces, and increasing the already massive police budget. Still, it does not provide a plan on how to combat the economic, criminal, legal, and cultural inequities our BIOPAC residents are facing. We are calling for a system that has attacked Black Indigenous People of Color communities for centuries, to be cut in half, as these communities are tired of being terrorized and told that it's for their protection, their protection. Racial injustice is a systemic problem that is worsened by the police. To be part of the solution, you must prioritize community needs over keeping a police budget. It's really hard to believe that Kent's goals include having a thriving city and an inclusive community, yet your actions display a very strong need to maintain the status quo of oppression placed on Black Indigenous and People of Color. As our elected officials, you should be holding yourselves accountable to address racial injustice in the city of Kent. Due to the time provided, I'm gonna end my statement here. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jamal.
Hello, my name is Jamal. I'm a member of four forty-two as well, and a resident of Kent. I'm here to speak directly to the mayor and the Kent City Council regarding their actions to address racial injustice, to sort of piggyback off of what Komol and Heaven said. The system of policing is designed to oppress police and brutalize BIPOC folks. It has been made extremely clear in multiple emails sent by Chief Padilla before and after the Kent Black Lives Matter March in June, that the Kent Police Department, like all other police forces throughout the country, will continue upholding a racist and oppressive system rooted in white supremacy. Mayor Ralph and Chief Padilla were both in attendance on June eleventh, twenty twenty, at the Black Lives Matter March in Kent. The attendance of both Ralph and Padilla was simply for optics. If not, then why would Chief Padilla take a knee with the protesters and later send an email saying he only takes a knee before God and his wife? The answer to that is simple. He took a knee in support of Black Lives for Optics, but behind closed doors, his support is untrue. Anyone who doesn't support a factual statement like Black Lives Matter should not be the chief of police for a community filled with Black lives. As for Mayor Ralph, it is clear that her attendance was also just for optics. The movement to defund the Kent Police Department began at the Black Lives Matter March in June, and has only grown since then, with multiple actions led by BIPOC youth taking place in support of this demand. But it is clear that Mayor Ralph has not been paying attention because of actions such as the proposed purchase of twenty-four police vehicles in the next two years, and the twenty-twenty-one budget proposal with too many of the same ingredients as previous budgets. Most of the ingredients available have the potential to enable an equitable system, but the proportions are off. Myself and many other young people are tired of these imbalances. We see the same trends. We see the same language. We see the same actions. As members of this community, we don't just want increased engagement, we need it. We aren't able to make necessary changes without the support of our elected officials, but we are able to suffer from the consequences of action and inaction. Unfortunately, three minutes is not enough time for me to tell you all how I really feel about the race and equity resolution and the proposed twenty-twenty-one budget, but I'd like to offer a critique regarding community engagement. In section D of the race and equity resolution, it states, "The city hired a community engagement coordinator in twenty seventeen in the mayor's office tasked with enhancing community engagement." If that is true, I'm not sure how much it has improved since then, but the process of getting here to be speaking tonight as a public commenter, it was way too hard. It was not streamlined, and it took way too much time to get here. To end my statement, I request increased correspondence between the Kent City Council, the mayor, and community organizations like four forty-two. I yield back.
The next speaker is Kasey Farrar.
Good evening. My name is Kasey Farrar. I live in Kent. Good evening, Mayor Ralph and Kent City Council. I'm going to translate a brief portion of my greeting. So what I just said, thank you, self-respecting people. Thank you to the Makulshu and Kosailish people, and to the Duamish who continue, continue to seek recognition. My name is Kasey Farrar. I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the people and indigenous land we are meeting on this evening in my Klingit language, bringing the utmost respect to you all and this space. As a resident of Kent, I felt compelled to attend the city council meeting tonight and speak before you, because I'm incredibly inspired by the youth leadership and public conversation happening in our community right now. I have three generations of my family here in Kent, so this is important to me as a resident, a parent, and a voter. Twenty twenty has exposed what many of us have known all along. Racism is ever-present here in the United States, and Kent, Washington unfortunately, is no exception. No matter where we come from or what our color, we work hard to support ourselves and our families. We need to join together with people from all walks of life to fight for our future, just like we won the right to vote, love who we love, and civil rights in the past. In addition to what we have just heard, solutions offered by youth leaders that I would like to lift up include the demilitarization of police equipment, weapons, and military-grade training. I honor the service of friends, family, and those of you in this room, but we cannot continue to fund military-grade equipment and training that signals to our youth that we are at war with them. In addition, the formation of a completely independent youth review board. The council's resolution notes that for over twenty-five years, a Kent Police Youth Board exists, but at this moment, with this level of youth organizing and leadership we have before us, it is pretty clear to me that some key voices are missing from the conversation. In closing, decolonizing education and investing in more social and political programs, including K through twelve and community-based education, is a goal I imagine many of us aspire to, but may not know where to start. Let's listen to our youth. The status quo is not only not working, but is perpetuating white supremacy and violence against Black and Brown people. John Lewis, rest in power, one of the most famous youth organizers, said in his final letter of twenty twenty, "Like so many young people today, I was searching for a way out, or some might say a way in. Ordinary people with extraordinary vision can redeem the soul of America by getting in what I call good trouble, necessary trouble." Let's embrace the extraordinary vision of youth leaders here in Kent. Let's celebrate their leadership and not only listen, but find ways to bring them in. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sam Sumpter.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sam Sumpter, and I am Vice President of UAW Local Four-One-Two-One, the Union of Six Thousand Academic Student Employees and Postdocs at the University of Washington. I live in Seattle, but many of our members live in Kent. I'm also a member of MLK Labor, which represents more than one hundred thousand workers in a hundred and fifty different affiliate unions in King County. I'm here to speak in support and solidarity with the four forty-two youth organizing for divestment from law enforcement officers and in support of a participatory budget, as city council discusses the issues of racism policing and the city budget. At our June twenty twenty meeting of MLK Labor, as an extension of our commitment to becoming an anti-racist union movement, we voted to support the reexamination, reexamination of all budget choices to prioritize non-law enforcement investments in the community. As a component of this, we further voted in September to recommend that funding for law enforcement officers be divested towards non-violent unarmed civilian jobs, supporting community services, health, public welfare, and housing and community development, and that layoffs of these jobs be avoided at all costs. In my union, we're proud to have the history of coming together with our community to take action around these priorities. To quote from our union's open letter from June, "As a union of teachers and researchers, we fight injustice through our work, our collective bargaining, and our activism. We have joined with many other unions in centering our most vulnerable communities in this fight to take on the policies that foster race and income equality in education, housing, and healthcare. Law enforcement is tasked with securing an unjust social economic order that disproportionately does violence against Black, Brown, and low-wage communities. Being in solidarity with working people means supporting the survival of working people. For Black Indigenous and other working people of color, the police have often been sources of violence and danger, not of safety. We must divest from policing and instead invest in Black and Brown communities in order to create true community safety and well-being. Thank you for your time."
The next speaker is Alicia Glenwell.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Ralph and council members. My name is Alicia Glenwell, and I'm a resident of Kent. I'm speaking tonight about both the sales tax ordinance and equity resolution under consideration on tonight's agenda. First, I urge you to vote no on the sales and use tax for affordable housing and services ordinance. I speak from my twenty years of experience as a domestic violence advocate and as the policy and special projects manager with the Coalition Ending Gender-Based Violence. Trauma is a major predictor of chronic homelessness in all populations, and domestic and sexual victimization is the number-one cause of homelessness for women and children. These dynamics are compounded for communities of color, for whom layers of racial oppression and discrimination amplify the risks and impacts of abuse and homelessness. When we talk about how to house those who've been the most marginalized in our region, we are talking about survivors. We know what will work to end chronic homelessness, a powerful regional approach to building safe, permanent supportive housing. King County is currently considering a health through housing initiative that will provide the funding and coordination critical to an effective regional response. Passing a separate city tax dilutes our collective ability to be effective in combating chronic homelessness, and the proposed eligibility cap of sixty percent of the area median income will not get the support to those who are most vulnerable in our communities. Vote no on the sales tax and join other cities across our county to bring our unhoused neighbors into safe, healthy homes as quickly as possible. I'm also speaking tonight to challenge the resolution declaring equity a foundational requirement in the provision of city services. This proposal does not go nearly far enough to address the profound and deeply harmful racism built into our city's institutions, particularly our police and other criminal justice systems. This resolution does not actually center racial equity, nor is it responsive to your constituents of color or to the BIOPAC-led organizing groups, groups like four forty-two, that are calling for substantive divestment from police and real investment in community-based solutions that would truly address the health and safety needs of the residents of Kent. Again, speaking from my twenty years of experience in the gender-based violence movement, I can attest that though domestic and sexual victimization has long been used to justify the growth of the criminal legal system, police and prosecution do not make survivors and communities safer, or they endanger many. Anti-bias training, renaming diversity task forces, toothless policy reviews, other reform-based measures that have not improved outcomes for BIPOC folks when they deal with police in the last four hundred years, they will not do so now. Instead of an empty resolution, take steps tonight that will actually address the economic, social, and institutional inequities for communities of color in Kent. Please honor your commitments and duties to listen to your constituents and lead in a way that truly reflects the perspectives and needs of all of your communities. Use your power as leaders of our city to create healthier, safer, more equitable Kent, where all of us can thrive. Thank you.
The next speaker is Reverend Dr. Perry Moore.
Good evening, Mayor Ralph, President Trautner, council members, my fellow public servants. I'm speaking tonight from my location of privilege, as a white, middle-class woman, a homeowner in Kent, a leader of a local faith community, an alternate on the Human Services Commission, and as a proud mother of a resilient son living with mental illness. The issue of our city budget is of deep concern to me, as to so many in our community, especially Black Indigenous and People of Color. I would like to amplify the voices of young BIOPAC organizers insofar as they speak to the problem of inadequate funding for essential social services, with which law enforcement officers are currently tasked and poorly suited to fully address. There are two sets of experiences that inform my request for your commitment to make no cuts to the human services budget, and in fact, to step forward with more substantial investment in mental health, social services, and housing for all. First, as a pastor, I often interact with those in our community who are without shelter, many times due to mental and addiction illnesses. When I need support for these encounters, there is no one for me to call except the police. I always ask for an officer with crisis intervention training, but even so, the officers themselves often tell me that they are uncomfortable being put in the position of intervening in mental health crises. How different it would be if I could call a team of mental health professionals and social workers to attend the situation and provide immediate care and resources. Second, as a mother of an adult son with mental illness, I've served on committees- and organizations both here and in the Bay Area, such as the National Alliance on Mental Illness and their Family-to-Family Program. Not only have my family and I experienced the traumatic and heartbreaking event of having to call the police during my own son's mental health crisis, I've also advocated with police departments alongside other parents. It is difficult to bridge the gap between our position of concern for our loved ones and the officer's training of threat assessment. I recall one mother weeping as she explained to me that especially for her tall, Black son with mental illness, these police events could easily become life-threatening and even deadly. So today, I use my voice to speak for those whom I serve, whom I accompany, whom I love, to ask you to please consider directing some of the 48% of the city's funding towards mental health and social services, as well as some towards supportive housing, including the Help Through Housing Initiative. Doing so not only allows police officers to focus their energies on so bravely serving and protecting our city, it also returns those who suffer from economic, racial, and health disparities to a place of dignity and wellness in our beloved and diverse city. Thank you for your time, for your service, and for your ethical decisions on behalf of all citizens in Kent.
I will now read comments into the record that were received. The following comment was received by the following people: Cindy Arias, a resident of Kent; Alex Rolason-Halbu Hooper, resident of Samamish; Dianka Sai, resident of Kent; Shay Scribner, resident of Kent; Jenny Fang, resident; Maritza Menoza, a taxpaying member. Dear Mayor Ralph and the Kent City Council, as a resident of Kent, I am reaching out to you because significant changes need to be made within the city of Kent. First off, I'd like to address the proposed decision not to defund the Kent Police Department. The Race and Equity Plan does not address root issues. It is reckless that this plan seeks to give more funding to an already huge police budget but not to Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities in this city. We are calling for a system that has attacked BIPOC communities for centuries to be cut in half as these communities are tired of being terrorized and told that it is for their protection. It is necessary that you, as our elected officials, prioritize the needs expressed by the Kent community. Currently, this so-called Race and Equity Resolution calls for increasing police and city funding but does not call for any funding towards BIPOC communities in this city. The Race and Equity Resolution fails to recognize the needs of Kent residents, particularly the BIPOC communities that make up the majority of the Kent population. This resolution puts forth internal efforts like race equity training, task forces, and increasing the already massive police budget. Still, it does not provide a plan on how to combat the economic, criminal, legal, and cultural inequities our BIPOC residents face. Despite an extreme economic recession that disproportionately impacts BIPOC, low-income, disabled, and other WES marginalized groups, the city has not provided funding to address these inequities. Our people need funding towards affordable housing, community healing, student ethnic studies curriculum, and so much more. Racial injustice is a systematic problem that is exasperated by the police. To be part of this solution, you must prioritize community needs over keeping a police budget. Defund the Kent Police and invest in youth and BIPOC communities. The city's budget is a moral document, and I urge you, as your values state under innovation, find a way. The next comment was received by Alan Sutliff. He does not state whether he is a resident. Mayor Ralph, Council President Troughtner, and council members Boyce, Fincher, Core, Larmor, Michaud, and Thomas. I want to thank you all, first of all, for taking on the serious elected roles in the city on behalf of all of us who live and work here. The political nature of your roles means that you will never please everyone, and I recognize the voters who turn out in recent elections have shaped the direction of the city council in ways that do not reflect the populace of the city of Kent. As a community member, I know that means I have more work to do. I'm writing, speaking tonight, against the adoption of Resolution Number 2017. This resolution spans five pages on recitals that are clearly meant to articulate a defense of all that has been done to embrace diversity and all the trainings that have been available to change the hearts and minds of employees. One recital even takes on the concept of defunding the police and makes it clear that the city does not think there is any merit to the concept of divesting police funds and spending those funds in more effective practices that would actually make the community safer for Black, Indigenous, and other people of color. The changes that are resolved are superficial in nature and do not really signify any real change for BIPOC youth in our community. Section 2 says "continue to work," which means to say, "You are doing fine, just go about your business." Section 3 says "continue training." I'm not sure what Section 4 will do in reality because it still would be a board wholly controlled by the city. Section 5 around police policies might be perceived as doing something, but if you read it carefully, it actually doesn't mandate any change and doesn't even take a position that use of force should be eliminated or duty to intervene should be only maintained in extreme situations, but rather leaves it up to the police chief to decide. Section 6 is fine, but it really only says what we should have been doing as a city for years. Either vote this resolution down because it is really meaningless, or postpone the vote on this resolution until the city council can consult with BIPOC youth in our community on revisions. I have separately sent a much longer email in support of positions taken by the local youth group known as 442. It is imperative that this council sit down and listen, truly listen, to the BIPOC youth leaders in our community. They are our future, and if we truly want to be an inclusive city, then we must listen and learn from them. This next comment was submitted by Daniel Martin, a resident of Burien. Dear Mayor Ralph and Kent City Council, I would like to ask you to reject the Race and Equity Resolution. A plan that increases police funding but does not invest in the BIPOC communities is a plan that fails to meet the demands of the moment. Racial disparities in policing and violent over-enforcement against BIPOC people are known and measurable and cannot be eradicated by adding bias training. Structural changes need necessary. In addition to Geovon Joseph McDade, who was killed by an officer in Kent in 2017, the community holds in memory and demands accountability and justice and change on behalf of the uncounted BIPOC people who have been killed by police in and around Martin Luther King County, including Manuel Ellis, Tacoma, 2020; Jesse Sari, Auburn, 2019; Malik Williams, Federal Way, 2019; Leonard Thomas, Fife, 2018; Me Chance, Dunlap, Gittens, Des Moines, 2017; Tommy Lee, Burien, 2017; Charlena Lyles, Seattle, 2017; Renee Davis, Muckleshoot Reservation, 2016; Cecil Lacy Jr., Tulala Reservation, 2015; Dustin Theo Harris, Auburn, 2012; John T. Williams, Seattle, 2010; Robert L. Reese, Seattle, 1965; Barry Lawson, Seattle, 1938. Increasing the police budget in the face of a movement to end police brutality and overpolicing and the school-to-prison pipeline that have been used throughout our history to oppress BIPOC people is moving in exactly the wrong direction. Please reject this resolution and listen to the demands of the community to defund the police and refund BIPOC communities. This next comment was submitted by Christina Brennan, a resident of Kent. First, I want to acknowledge that you have impossible jobs. If you don't know that when you ran, I'm sure you learned it quickly. There are systematic issues and barriers at every turn in addition to trying to meet the needs of a diverse population. Our jobs as citizens aren't to be your cheerleaders but to hold you accountable with demands and critiques. So today, I'm reaching out to demand that you rescind any proposal around a Race and Equity Resolution and start over. Community, especially those who are of the most vulnerable and impacted by society's ills, need to be a part of the process from the beginning. How can you propose something about equity without those who need it at the table? I also could not find detailed information online about the resolution. I demand no budget increases are made in any department, but especially the police department, until this process of input and transparency has come to fruition. I once again could not find details on this proposal for new police cars, but did learn that you spent $2 million just two years ago. We don't need more supercharged vehicles tearing through our streets. I live in the lakes and constantly feel terrorized while on walks. In addition to them filling up at the maintenance building, they like to patrol apartment complexes but not the condos, interestingly enough. I find a couple of other correlating matters disturbing. Hearing that Chief Padilla took a knee to honor Black lives killed by police, then later said that he only kneels to God and proposing to his wife, this is so disrespectful. Regardless of the topic, why should someone who lies postures to be the police officer with the most powerful and highest salary? Mayor Dana Ralph's actions are troublesome. First, I learned today that she blocked community org 442 on Instagram. This is disgraceful. She is a public servant. I checked all of their posts, and they did not once threaten or name-call or any other action that would make it okay for the mayor to silence her constituents. I noticed that she has the blue line flag, which is equivalent to a gang sign in her office. This outright devotion to a small subset of community in her office is unprofessional for someone who should serve all of us, clearly favoring some and ignoring others. That flag should be reserved for her home. Police also shouldn't have that blue line on their vehicles, uniforms, etc. They already have a uniform and symbols, badges. It's a constant reminder to citizens that they can beat and kill us and get away with it, just like the murder of Geovon Joseph McDade's. Lastly, I encourage you all to read this expose by a former police officer and finally come to terms with the fact that you are upholding a racist system and that you have the power to begin changing it. Don't move forward with this resolution or budget increases until community input and transparency has been implemented. We must find a way to ensure public safety by investing in what prevents crimes, starting with the youth. Police do not keep us safe. Listen to 442. This next comment was received by Dave Wilson. He is a Kent business owner. I hear that some people are of the mind that we should divert funding from the police to other areas of our community. As a taxpaying citizen of the city of Kent, I can't say how much I oppose any thought of defunding our police force. With the current county process of not incarcerating offenders, it is a time where we should be increasing our police presence and protection level. As I have seen with the city of Seattle and the lack of protection, many like myself will not go into the city to shop, dine, or be entertained, even after COVID. That lowering spending is a direct result of comfort with regard to personal safety. We do not want our city to be defunded or to be left unprotected. Please do not defund our police force. This next comment was received by Sandy McLaughlin, and she did not indicate if she is a resident of Kent. I would very much like to voice my opinion about defunding the Kent Police Department. I am very much against this. I live in downtown Kent, and I see firsthand every day how much we need our police department. I walk through town quite a bit, and I see a lot. If there were not our wonderful police officers here, or even just less of them, we would be in for some dangerous conditions out on the streets. We are just getting Kent to be a place where we can be proud of it and I can walk around town. If we are to defund or reduce the police department in any way, I will not feel safe. We should be talking about increasing staff and training at a time. This is not a decrease. This next comment was received by Wendy Church. I'm writing to express my sentiment that the Kent City Council not bow to the pressure of a vocal minority and resist efforts to defend or lessen funding for the Kent Police Department. The Kent Police Department is an exemplary law enforcement agency. What's happening in other places around the country is in no way relates to the policies and actions of the Kent Police Department, who by any objective measure is a leader in terms of progressive policing and community relations. Here is a link to an unbiased Gallup poll that shows nationally what the majority of us really want with respect to policing. This poll shows that over 80% of Black Americans want the same or increased police presence in their communities. Most of us, the silent majority who have jobs, work to support our families, and do not have time to spend marching, do not want to see the already underfunded police lost any more of their budget. Thank you and the rest of the council for your service to the city. This next comment was received by Jeanette Barron, a resident of Kent. As you meet tonight at your Kent City Council meeting, I would appreciate if you would take in consideration my plea not to defund the Kent Police Department in any way. I have lived in Kent since 2003, over 17 years. I value living in a safe community and having a police department that does more than police the streets. The outreach they provide to our community and youth is invaluable. Let's show them the compassion and respect they deserve in serving the Kent community. Give them the training they require to do their jobs effectively and efficiently. I believe any group asking the police department be defunded is not truly understanding what they are asking or what it entailed. We often ask the residents to vote on additional funding, then maybe we should vote on it as well to remove it. One group should not hold the power to negatively change the safety of our citizens and the police. Again, as a 17-plus-year resident of Kent, I do not agree with any defunding of the Kent Police Department. This next comment was received by Reynard Sands, a Kent business owner. Hello, my name is Reynard Sands. I'm a resident, business owner, and senior pastor at Be Like Jesus Ministries. First of all, I want it to be known that I fully support our mayor, police chief, and the entire police department. I am African-American, and I am strongly against the defunding of our police department. Since the defunding of the police department in Minneapolis two months ago, the city council members are alarmed by the surge of crime. They are pressing their police chief about the uptick in crimes that include daylight carjackings, robberies, assaults, shootings, and street racing. Residents are asking, "Where are the police?" If we are not careful, we will look back and regret the defunding of our police department for years to come. Please do not defund our police department. I am in agreement for the Race and Equity Plan, which increases the training for our officers. Thank you for your time, and God bless. This next comment was received by Jacqueline Bowles. We do not believe the police department needs any defunding. Our police take care of us as citizens, and they work hard to secure our safety. We know the police department needs our help tremendously. They cannot do this job alone. It takes us, as all citizens, to do our part in helping the Kent Police Department and their fellow officers. We thank them for giving us their time, skills, and energy in a very unsafe environment. We know policing has gotten a bad name for the recent events that have occurred in the past months, and yes, they have been devastating for our nation. One apple can never spoil the entire bunch if you pull the apple out. The time has come for us to work together as all races, creeds, genders, religions, and beliefs, and realize we are all God's children in His kingdom. He has a plan for us all to work together in love. Thank you for your time and consideration in allowing our comments to be heard. This next comment is from Tracy Sands, a resident of Kent. My name is Tracy Sands. I am a resident of Kent, business owner, and a pastor's wife. I want you to know that I am in full support of our mayor, Dana Ralph, and our police chief, Raphael Padilla, as well as our entire police force. Do I think that we should defund our police? A resounding no. I like to live peacefully and like knowing that when I call the police, they come. The recent news of the defunding of the Minneapolis Police Force should be a great example of why we don't want to defund. The uptick of daylight carjackings, robberies, assaults, shootings, and street racing should be a good example. I am in agreement of the Race and Equity Plan, which will increase the training of our officers. I am in agreement of the race and equity plan, which will increase the training of our officers. This comment was received by Randall Smith. He is a business owner in Kent. Dear Mayor and City Council, as a local business owner and resident here in the city of Kent, I would like to state for the record my opinion on defunding the police. It is my concern that crime and safety of our residences and officers in the city should be our main focus. Not that some of political rhetoric. We should not follow, we should lead, and do all we can to instill through our community that safety is primary in this matter. Our city of Kent has always been known as a safe place for families. People come from around the region, are moving here to start families of their own because of the sense of family we feel that is present in the city of Kent. My family has been here in Kent for thirty years, and we have much respect for our mayor, city council, and most importantly, our police department. I know that they will place safety as a number one priority in this city. The final comment tonight was received by Mike McCardle, a resident of Kent. Please do not bend to the loud and few voices of anarchists calling for the defunding of police. Kent PD is currently understaffed in relation to most of its peers. I have always had a very professional experience with Kent Police Department in my forty years as a resident. Do not conform with the idiots in Seattle who are in the process of destroying their city. Mayor, that is the last public comment.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate everyone for taking the time this evening to submit that public comment. We will move on in our agenda to item number eight, which is the consent calendar. Consent calendar is a compilation of work that the city council has done over the last several weeks through the committee of the whole process. Council President Troutner, do you have a motion for the consent calendar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to accept consent calendar items A through N.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Moving on in the agenda, item number nine is other business. We have two items this evening. The first item is a resolution declaring equity as a foundational requirement in the city of Kent, and speaking to that is our chief administrative officer, Derek Matheson.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, council members. The city council and other city leaders have been working to identify and then start to implement a number of race and equity initiatives over the summer. The council discussed equity with the mayor, police chief, and others at council meetings in June, July, August, and September. The council, as well as individual council members, expressed interest in adopting a resolution that sets forth the council's expectations in the equity arena for the city as a whole and for the police department. So the mayor, chief administrative officer, police chief, and city attorney took the council's interests from council meetings, individual meetings between council members and the police chief in August, and individual council members' comments to the mayor or me, and created a draft resolution. The council went through that draft resolution section by section on September twenty-second and directed staff to make some changes. And there's a strikeout and underlying version, as well as a clean version of the resolution in your packet this evening. There are six key changes. The first one is add to recital A that Kent is the tenth most diverse community in the nation, and there are more than a hundred and thirty languages spoken in the Kent School District. Number two adds to recital D, a reference to youth programs. Number three, it makes stronger references to forms of discrimination in recitals H and I. Number four, it adds to section one that the police department's candidate pool and hiring decisions should reflect Kent's diversity. Number five, it adds to section four that there should be new membership over time in the police department's diversity task force, which will be renamed the Police Race and Equity Advisory Board. And then number six, it modifies the items the council wants to see in our 2021 state legislative agenda based on strong recommendations from our state lobbyists. Her recommendations come from what she currently sees on the ground in Olympia, as well as what she believes will best position her and Kent for success next session. I would be remiss not to clarify a couple issues that came up during public comment earlier this evening. First of all, this resolution is not a budget request or a budget decision. It doesn't direct funding to any city agencies such as the police department or human services. The mayor's 2021-22 proposed budget, which is a totally separate document and process, doesn't add police officers and does highlight eleven million dollars this year and sixteen million dollars next year in investments in our vulnerable populations, and we'll discuss that more in the coming weeks. Secondly, the resolution is not an equity strategic plan. The mayor's proposed budget includes funding for an equity manager and an equity strategic plan where we'll work to address the root issues in our community. I think the best way to characterize this resolution is as a transitional step that sets forth the council's expectations at this point in time and for the next several months as we transition from where we are now to when we are able to bring an equity manager on board and put together that strategic plan. So with that, happy to turn it back to the council and respond to any questions.
Council, any questions before we entertain a motion? All right, I'm seeing none. Councilmember Boyce, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, then I'd like to speak to it as well. I'll move to adopt Resolution 2017 with the following changes to the last sentence of section two, where it reads, "In particular, the city council request the candidate pool and hiring in all departments, including the police department, reflects the diversity of the Kent community."
A second?
Yes, second.
Question, if I may?
So just for process, I've got a motion and a second. I'm going to allow the maker of the motion to speak, and then we'll take additional comment.
Mine's for clarification, if I may?
Okay.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Bill, did I understand that was one motion, or was that a motion with kind of an amendment attached on your behalf?
That was a motion, and you're looking to section two,
Right.
the last sentence in section two,
Right.
hoping to clarify that and rewrite it. That was my purpose.
Okay, so that's not an actual amendment? That's the reading of the motion as you put forth?
I think that's an amendment to what was already in the package.
To what's in the packet, right, and so the motion includes that change?
Okay, okay, I'm all right then. Thanks.
All right, so I've got a motion and a second. Councilmember Thomas, you got your clarification?
I did, thank you, ma'am.
All right, Councilmember Michelle?
Can I speak to my motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. All the way, full circle. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I want to say, I will be supporting this resolution. As most of us, we have received numerous emails of defunding the police. We receive numerous email of not defunding the police. You know, at the end of the day, if you look at the national data, and we have been talking about this by the chief, you know, if you look at the national data population per Kent, we're probably a hundred police short. If we look at our neighboring city, Auburn-Ritten, we're probably forty short. And if we decide to defund the police as the email fifty percent, so we got a hundred and fifty police officer, then what they're asking us to do is to fund our police officers in half, which means we will have seventy-five police officer for the sixth largest city in the state, for the tenth most diverse city in the state, right? And I just, you know, as an elected official, you know, to defund our police officers from one-fifty to seventy-five with the population that we have, with the diversity that we have, it just doesn't add up to me. I mean, I think this resolution that we have in place today, it'll address a lot of issues that we need to work towards around hiring, around recruiting, training. I mean, those things are spelled out in there. And to me, at the end of the day, it's about accountability, right? I want us to focus on accountability. We get to fund the police to one. If you don't have accountability for that, it really doesn't matter. So at the end of the day, to me, it's about accountability, and I will be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Larmour?
Thank you. Actually, I think Councilmember Michelle is before me.
She put her hand down. Councilmember Michelle, did you have a comment? Okay, yeah, she lowered her hand.
Okay. I unfortunately am not going to be supporting this tonight, and my reasoning actually does not center on the defunding issue. For me, it is section six. I think we need some time to go back to the drawing board and engage with our communities. What I've heard tonight and what I read of the changes when this came through, I don't think set our commitment to a co-response model and police data collection and reporting is strong enough. We, in section six, you know, talk about adding this to our legislative agenda, which I fully support, and it absolutely would benefit us better if the state would take this up. My concern, though, is that if it doesn't get taken up, we've not made a commitment here to these policies. So I will not be supporting this, and I would actually respectfully ask that we can maybe take this up with some more engagement, either with the equity manager when they're on board, or some additional engagement with our BIPOC communities. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I support Councilmember Larmour's request. I also want to make clear, as what CEO Matheson stated, that the budget is completely separate from this. What we are going to be doing and hiring the equity manager and having the consulting done is, hopefully, well, we will get a policy out of that and more direction. And also, that is, some of the issues that were brought up in some of the comments would be addressed there, as well as, they might even learn some more this coming weekend about some of the things such as additional funding that has been put forth for youth programs or for communities that are disadvantaged and in need. So there's more work to be done. We're not saying that this is all the work, but I would support putting a hold on it because where I've read it many times and felt that it was sufficient, I would like to take another couple of reads at it to make sure that what I thought we were putting in there is actually in there.
Okay, Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Keep in mind that if this was voted down or not accepted, you could always come back with the revised position. However, I will go on what Bill, Councilmember Boyce, was talking about. Suppose there are seventy-five full-time police officers. Now, that would be okay, except we've got three full-time shifts. We run twenty-four hours a day. So now we're down to twenty-five officers trying to patrol seventy-four square miles. I don't see where people are coming from here, so that's pretty much what I have to say. I'll be going along with Councilmember Boyce on this one. Sorry, Marley.
Councilmember Cor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm with Councilmember Larmour and Councilmember Fincher on holding it. As we talked about last time, this is a working document, so we just probably need to clarify it more and have a conversation on some things. And looking at it, I do think that, I don't remember, like Councilmember said, section six, definitely we are throwing it all on our legislature. So we need to show some commitment to, you know, having a mental health support for our communities and other things that we have talked about. So I would be in favor of holding it for now until maybe we have a clearer picture and have a better conversation on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Boyce?
Thank you, Madam. I just want to make a comment. You know, we have spent some time talking about this here. A couple of council members were the ones that brought this forward, which I'm a little surprised now, kind of at eleven hour, which you have the right to vote how you feel, but I thought we put some time in this or spent time talking about this here. I think we all agree that it's probably not perfect, right? And it's always going to be a living document, and, you know, we talk about section six. Well, the legislature not going to know anything until they meet in January. They won't know anything in June. So I guess I just need, as we go forward, what's missing, what need to be here? Because I'm not too clear on what it is, except for item six, where we're not going to know that anyway until the legislative meet. So I just, whatever happened, we're going forward. Don't the council member who opposed this here, they need to be clear, you know, because we spent time talking about this here. And, you know, there's need to be clear what is missing, so we all have to be on the same page, so we can move this forward.
Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to agree with Councilmember Larmour after hearing public comments and just thinking about it, it's clear that what we wanted to put forward didn't come across as we wanted it to. And so we need to consider those things and tweak some things and make some changes.
Councilmember Fincher? Councilmember Fincher, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. One of the things, just to Councilmember Boyce's request, one of the things that I would like more clarity on would be the programs, types of programs, and things that we're going to be putting back into the community. So that funding, just more clarity on how that would be used, where it would be targeted to go. So I am not for decreasing the number of police, but for adding things into the community that would help their job by cutting the, decreasing the number of the people that they have to serve, basically. Putting more money into the front end and keeping people out of the justice system. So I want to make sure that the money that we're going to be doing is actually going to be helping agencies and organizations that are doing.
Councilmember Troutner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that I am in support of this resolution. Again, kind of echoing some of the things that Councilmember Boyce had said. You know, we all put our input into this. We worked through the process of changing things that we felt were better fit to what we were trying to say. And just to remind everyone that a lot of the things that we're talking about right now has to do with working through the budget process. You know, when we're talking about addressing things that the state may or may not be able to fund, you know, those are conversations that we have throughout, you know, these budget meetings that we've been having in our workshops. So just kind of echoing on that piece that I think we're kind of talking about things that we care about, which is very important, but two different issues here. Thank you.
Councilmember Larmour?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to address the concerns raised by Councilmembers Boyce and Troutner as well. I think, you know, Derek said it best, he said this is a statement of our expectations, and I think that's where we need to put a little bit more clarity. I know that some of my expectations were not met in this, and I think we're hearing from the community that their expectations are not totally give credence, and yes, you know, the actions- And yes, you know, the actual operationalizing this plan takes place in budget and we'll be doing that work this weekend. Um, but I think this is our opportunity to be crystal clear on what our expectations are.
Okay, um, I'm just, I'm looking here in order, Council President Troutner, did you have an additional comment or is your hand just still up?
I apologize.
No, not a problem. Um, and next would be a Councilmember Fincher. Is your hand still up?
My hand is still up. I'm putting that down now. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Boyce.
Yes, my hand's up. I, I, I guess uh, for clarity purpose, you know, I think the email, uh, I think, you know, we make sure we set expectation right. Uh, we receive a lot of emails around defunding the police. Most of them in the email, that's what they was talking about, defunding the police, right? They also talk about some other things for community involvement and so on. So I, I, I guess, um, not that you have to say, I think Councilmember Fincher says she wasn't for defunding the police. So I'm just, um, as we move forward, we just need to be clear, set expectation, what is that we um, um, trying to do? And um, and what are we trying to address? So I'd be curious how we move forward, uh, just getting clarity around a thing that we need to make this uh, workable for everybody. And I think, um, you know, we had some pre-budget meeting, got the budget meeting on uh, Saturday. And I think Councilmember President Troutner talked about it. These things are two different things and uh, we're gonna be talking budget stuff that impacts this year. That's a totally different story and something we had to talk about on Saturday. So.
Okay, I don't see any more hands up. At this point, there is a motion on the table. Um, there has been some significant discussion around this. Um, Councilmember Boyce, would you like to move forward with your motion? And I will call for a vote.
I will say no.
Okay, um, so there's a motion on the table. So Council uh, Member Boyce, are you withdrawing that motion?
I will draw the motion.
Okay, so then is there a motion to table this resolution for additional conversation?
So move.
Second. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the tabling of the resolution?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Once again, I just want to emphasize, you know, um, on what is gonna take, or what is it we gonna put in this year to make it workable? I mean, I think we need to be crystal clear on that, right? And I talk to the BIPOC community, that's what it take, that's fine, but you know, it's just that um, I, we need to kind of work through this year. We have issues that we need to work through. So I'm hoping that we can get some clarity uh, from peers on what they think is missing. So we can uh, really move this thing forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Any additional comments before we call for the vote?
Yes, hey, good. If I get. Am I okay? Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a, an important lesson to be learned here. Because when I came tonight, I was under the full assumption that we were be prepared to vote, that everybody was happy. I mean, yeah, there was some gives and takes, but then everybody was on pretty understanding ground. And I don't see that obviously this evening. And that makes me worried about Saturday because we're kind of getting into this eleventh hour. And so I, I'm just worried about the precedent here. If the president, the council president, along with some others are saying, okay, let's do this. Let's meet your questions. Go to Derek or whomever you have a question. Get that resolved and let's see if we can move this forward, one way or the other. It didn't happen here. And I guess I'm concerned, Madam Mayor, that this may continue to happen in the future. And I, that bothers me a little. Uh, it really bothers me a little. That's all.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Larmour.
Um, I'm just, I get think clarifying. Councilmember Boyce, are you asking for input clarity tonight? Or are you suggesting uh, sometime before Saturday?
Well, not, I mean, if you have somebody else, that'd be fine. But I think um, as we go into Saturday, I mean, we talked about the budget stuff and so many things that's in this year, possible in this year uh, resolution. It may impact the budget and we have not talked about any of those things yet. So it, to me, like, you know, I, I kind of get what Councilmember Thomas said historically, how you work anything, where you bring things forward. You kind of have some sense of idea where people that, and not too many surprises, but that's okay. But as we move forward, I just think we're tomorrow, it's probably gonna be Saturday. We just need to understand what is gonna be in here. Reach out to Derek or Tony.
Yeah.
That'll help speed Saturday up. Otherwise, we're gonna be all day, all night.
D A O Matheson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share, as I've listened to the conversation this evening. I think um, council members' concerns with the resolution, um, for the most part, almost entirely come down to budget issues. Um, you're not certain yet um, how to deal with the legislative agenda if the legislature doesn't fund it. Um, you're interested in including um, programs that the city provides now or could provide. So my suggestion is just to table this until after the budget process. Work through those issues in the budget setting and then you can either take it up again or you could just leave it on the table because we're that much closer to the equity strategic planning process, which really is a far more robust version of what the resolution was trying to accomplish.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any additional hand raised, hands raised. There is a motion and a second on the table or on the, there's a motion, the second um, to table the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, um, moving on to the next item on other business is the um, ordinance on the sales and use tax for affordable housing services for um, fifteen ninety. And um, I believe we've got Marina Hansen joining us. Good evening, Marina.
Good evening. Um, I'm Marina Hansen, the Human Services Manager for the City of Kent. And I'm back again this evening for another consideration of House Bill nineteen, fifteen ninety. Um, I will do another quick refresh, so we're all on the same page. And I'll add a few more details that we learned since last week. And then I will turn it over to Adam Long in Legal to talk you through the actual ordinance itself. So once again, House Bill fifteen ninety was approved by the legislature in twenty twenty. And effectively, what that did was allow King County to um, impose a sales tax of up to one-tenth of one percent countywide. And the authority to implement the sales tax was extended to cities once the county did not take action prior to September thirtieth. Just as a reminder, a minimum of sixty percent of the funds collected must be used for construction of affordable housing, construction of mental and behavioral health facilities, and funding the operation and maintenance costs of newly constructed affordable housing facilities, providing housing-related services or evaluation and treatment centers. The facilities and programs that are funded through the levy um, have to serve those below sixty percent area median income. So including individuals with mental illness, veterans, seniors, homeless families with children, unaccompanied homeless youth, persons with disabilities um, or domestic violence victims. The remainder of the money must be used for maintenance on operation or evaluation of the programs and services. So we know now that the county did not impose the full tax rate by September thirtieth. So what that means is that any city can submit a proposition to voters or impose their new council manic authority to impose the whole or remainder of the sales and use tax rate. Um, it's expected that the county, you know, they will impose the full tax rate next week. But um, if, if, if the city does it first, then the county must provide a tax credit against its tax for the full amount imposed by the city. So what we know now about the county's plan, um, as it stands, moving forward as part of the executive's twenty twenty budget package, so they have indicated their primary focus, um, at least initially, is going to be on housing two thousand um, of our chronically homeless residents. And they intend to do that by purchasing single-room setting buildings such as hotels, nursing homes, um, other buildings of the like. And they want to do that now while the economic conditions are favorable for that. Um, they have indicated they plan to consult with cities um, in which capital projects would be located. And they plan to prioritize cities that um, submit a written statement in support. So they will also need to spend at least thirty percent of funds in the cities with over sixty thousand residents. And we talked a little bit about that last week, um, in the community that generated those funds. Um, so before I turn it over to Adam, there's just a few things I want to leave you with as you begin your conversations. So as previously mentioned, King County did not meet the September thirtieth deadline to retain their exclusive rights over the tax, but all indications are that they will move forward um, next week to impose the tax countywide. So um, tonight you do have the opportunity to impose the tax and retain a hundred percent of the proceeds generated in the city limits of Kent. So um, that would add up to approximately two point eight million per year that could be used for projects serving Kent residents um, versus as little as eight hundred and forty thousand per year. Remember, we did that math last week when we're talking about that percentage um, for Kent projects that would ultimately be approved by King County, um, rather than you or the mayor. Um, and just, um, in general, there are some key differences in our policy objectives. King County has been very clear about how they intend to um, impose the tax to focus pretty much solely on the two thousand primitive, permanent supportive housing units for those um, experiencing chronic homelessness, while Kent's priorities and our um, objectives are a little bit broader. And so if we were able to um, move forward in Kent specifically, that would give us a little more flexibility in what we do with those funds. And we do, again, as we've talked about, we have that opportunity to um, consider pooling funds with either skip or we could consider um, entering into an inter-local agreement with the county. Even if we wanted to consider allowing um, us to allocate our funds to the county to distribute. If there was a property or a project that we felt strongly about and would serve Kent residents. We know now that the cities of Covington, Issaquah, Renton, and Snoqualmie voted to impose the tax last night. And we understand that King County Council Committee, the whole, will consider legislation this af- actually, they did consider legislation this afternoon. And that will go to council for a vote on October thirteenth. So um, at this point, I just want to thank Legal for their assistance in getting this um, up to speed really quickly. Could not have done it without them. And I will turn it over to Adam in Legal at this point to go through the ordinance unless you have specific questions for me right now. I'm happy to take questions too.
Questions for Marina. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. So Adam will turn it over to you.
Thanks, Marina, and Council Mayor. The ordinance pretty much just mirrors the statutory requirements. Marina's presentation really covers all the, the hot topics in it. Um, so I won't actually walk through it again since we already did that at workshop and nothing has changed in the ordinance. Um, just a few highlights. Um, the major one being that the effective date would be five days from publication, which I believe Kim is planning to get that out tomorrow. So we would be on a very, very tight timeline um, in getting this enacted uh, prior to the county doing so. Um, another um, important point is that the ordinance does provide that um, the funds may be used by the mayor and they may be pooled with skip for uh, more of a regional approach, if that's the way we want to go. Um, if there are any specific questions, I can answer those now as well.
Right, questions for Adam. All right, I'm not, oh, Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have uh, just a general question about, it doesn't really state how, I mean, we talked about uh, pulling with skip. But we don't really have all the information on how we're authorizing the mayor to use the funds. We know it's for specific use, but I think uh, if council is um, passing this, then it, we would like to at least know how the funds are being used and possibly have some say in that. I, I would just like to request that that be taken into consideration. So just, just a comment. Thank you.
So, um, oh, Councilmember Larmour.
Actually, Mayor, if you want to address that, it might.
Yeah, so I'm, I just, yeah, I've got a couple of quick comments um, to follow up with the presentation. Want to, want to fill you all in on some conversations that I've been having over the last, um, the last week or so with both the county executive, the um, the Chair of the County Council and several other council members, also with um, the Director of Human Services at King County. And the, the idea here is that there, the county's proposal is that there's a regional approach to addressing homelessness, especially that zero to thirty, which we all know is the hardest, um, hardest population to support, right? Housing is not enough. There is need for wraparound services as well. And the county's current proposal is to purchase up to two thousand single rooms. So they're looking at hotels and nursing homes um, around the county, very specific um, rules. If the county adopts this tax, then um, um, minimum of thirty percent needs to be spent in those jurisdictions with over sixty thousand population. There's concern on both sides of that. Um, the smaller cities have concerns that, that nothing will be spent in their cities because there's no requirement. And the larger cities have concerns, um, especially in South County, that the bulk of the funding will be spent in South County um, because property, real estate is less expensive. So that's sort of been the foundation of those conversations. I think it's safe to say that um, that all cities are looking for a truly regional approach. And so that's why you've seen um, Renton, Covington, Snoqualmie, um, Issaquah take the votes that they did. And really, it's to reserve a seat at the table for the conversation. And so that, as cities, we actually have a say in what's happening. So that's the idea behind pooling with skip. Um, part of our agreement with skip is that, that there will not be projects cited in any city that the city is not in agreement with. Um, and it, it leaves that conversation open. Um, Councilmember Cor, to your point, I, I agree a hundred percent. Um, this is not any action that I would take without consultation or conversation with um, with the council. And one as far as in my conversation with the executive, letting him know that we would like to continue and with Claudia Balducci, that we would like to continue conversations with the county and see if there's an opportunity for an ILA to be signed. So the, this funding would then be directed back to the county um, as a part of that regional approach, which council would have to approve. So there's, there's built-in places for ongoing conversation with council. Um, I think it's important for everyone listening, for our, our public to know that the county will be taking this vote. Um, every county council member that I have spoken to um, has said it's, it's all but voted on. So they voted, I believe it was eight to one this afternoon at their committee of the whole. It will be on their agenda on the thirteenth. By you taking action tonight, you are not imposing a tax that is not going to be imposed. Um, and I think that that's important for, for Kent residents, residents to know, the action that you would be taking tonight is, is Kent reserving the ability to be a part of the conversation on what services are cited in Kent um, and, and the number. So I think that's an important clarification. Um, I am personally committed to making sure that we stay in these conversations and at the table um, up through implementation and beyond, so that we can take a truly regional approach to um, addressing homelessness in King County. It just, it, it looks different in every city, right? What Redmond needs and what, what the needs are in Kent based on our population, you've all seen that housing graph that Haley has um, put together for us, very, it looks very different here than it does say on the east side or, or um, in the north. So um, if you choose to pass this this evening, um, that is my commitment to stay engaged and to make sure that you are all engaged in that conversation as well. With that, um, I've got Councilmember Larmour followed by Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, so just, I think, you know, you echoed a couple of points I was going to make. And, you know, having been at some of those regional conversations around housing as well, I can tell you that um, I really feel like we need to take this action ourselves if we want to maintain that seat at the table. Um, I think, you know, they've been pretty clear that, you know, they want to focus on that thirty percent, the wraparound services, which we know are important, but I think, you know, Kent- which we know are important, but I think, you know, Kent has also, um, need to consider family housing for extremely low-income families in our community as well as a need that we have that possibly the east side doesn't. So I just think that the only way we're going to be able to control this pool of money is, you know, by imposing this ourselves unfortunately, and then pooling that money with a more honest, more sub-regional level with skip. Um, otherwise I'm afraid it's not going to be as beneficial to our individual residents as it could be. It was left entirely to the county. So, um, I will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you. Um, um, councilmember Voice, one quick follow-up on councilmember Larmour's comment. Um, when we discussed this with King County council members and the executive and talked about the opportunity to pool with skip or Arch, which is the east side, um, housing consortium, that group, um, that was met with very positive reaction. Um, by all that, that the idea of sub-regional planning really does make sense. So, um, I did not hear any opposition coming out of the county council or, or from the executive, um, yesterday to an idea such as, as pooling with skip or Arch. In fact, they were going to do some additional, um, research and conversation on that. Councilmember Voice.
Yes, uh, just the, the flip side to Councilmember Core's earlier question, uh, if we don't take an action and if we don't have the ally, the ILA, do we have any say still with the county? Okay.
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, I believe that the actual legislation says that the county would have to consult with the jurisdiction, but that does not, um, the word consult does not require actual, um, conversation or agreement of any kind.
Well, that's the point I was making. We have more say-so control here and work with, you know, than not doing anything. So, thank you.
All right, any additional, um, question, any additional questions? All right, I don't see any. So at this point, a motion would be in order.
I move to adopt ordinance number forty-three seventy, authorizing a sales and use tax for affordable housing and related services in accordance with RCW eighty-two point one four point five thirty, amending chapter three point one six of the Kent City Code and authorizing the mayor to use the funds or to pool resources with King County Housing and Homeless Partners.
Councilmember Larmour, was that you seconding?
Yes, I was, sorry.
Getting good at reading lips here. Um, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Council President Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think we're all in agreement. None of us want to raise taxes on any of our residents right now. But we've all said it multiple times, this is going to happen regardless if we do anything or not. And this is our opportunity to be that seat at the table and to be able to have a say in where that money that is spent in Kent comes back to Kent. Um, the mayor said multiple things, you know, all cities are different. The needs of our residents in Kent are different than the needs of other residents in our neighboring cities. So it's really important that, um, you know, we have that regional conversation. We talked about being able to, um, put money into skip. We talked about a possible ILA. There's a lot of options here. Um, and I know that the mayor has had multiple conversations with King County council members and the executive. And, um, I have no doubt that she will keep us posted throughout this process that, so that we can all work together to make decisions that will be best for the city. So, um, while we don't want to see this happen, um, this is the right thing to do at this point. Thank you.
Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, you know me, I hate taxes, but this is really, uh, the way the chief exec, chief executive, King County Executive Dow constantly has put us in kind of a really bad situation. I'm just gonna hold my nose and vote for it.
All right. Um, any other, any other comments?
Oh.
Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero and I will once again state my commitment to, um, maintain conversations with our county partners, looking for, uh, regional solutions, but specifically sub-regional solutions that make sense for us here in Kent and South County. And, um, keep you posted on all opportunities that are presented. All right, moving on to item number ten on our agenda, we have bids, uh, Meet Me on Meeker Sidewalk Improvement Project. And joining us is our, our newly, um, newly minted in, uh, interim Public Works Director Chad Byer.
Yay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ralph, council members. I'm happy to be here. I thought maybe all the participants were waiting for the bid tonight, but I see as the number dwindles, that may not be true. Um, I'm excited to bring the Meet Me on Meeker project forward. Um, council may remember that they awarded, uh, project earlier this spring in front of the driving range. Uh, looks something like this photo in the, uh, presentation. And that project is really coming along. And if, if folks have a moment or two to take a drive past the driving range, it looks really great out there. This next project, we found out in the spring that, uh, we were on the contingency list for federal funding, uh, one point five million dollars to complete the stretch from Russell Road to GRE. That's on the right side of this picture. So with this, the award of this bid, we'll have a completed section of the Meet Me on Meeker standard, uh, sidewalk and bike path from the Green River all the way to Sixty-Fourth Avenue South, uh, by, uh, say six months from out or eight months from now when the project's complete. So really an exciting, uh, milestone here. We put the bid or the project out for advertisements. We received fifteen bids. They were all very competitive. The low bid came in at, uh, one point four three million, which is about eighteen percent under the engineer's estimate. So really a great set of bids and we're, uh, recommending authorization to award to Acxiom General Construction. And I'll be available for questions if needed.
Okay, any questions for Chad? Oh, I think Chad, they're gonna let you off easy. All right, if there are no questions, is there a motion to approve?
Yes, thank you. I, um, I move to award the Meet Me on Meeker Russell Road GRE Sidewalk Improvement Project, Acxiom General Construction, Inc., in the amount of one million, four hundred thousand, four hundred twenty thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to the final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. We do not have any executive session tonight. Um, want to remind everybody, we are still in the middle of a pandemic, so please wear your masks, wash your hands, stay safe, check on your neighbors, make sure everybody's doing okay. Um, an extra little prayer to all of our parents out there that are going through homeschooling. Um, I know I've got a couple of them on this screen, so we are thinking of you. And also thank you to our teachers that are doing the same hard work on the opposite side of the camera.
And principals.
And principals, yes. Tell Pauline I did not forget her. Um, with that, I want to say thank you to the council for all of the good conversation tonight. Um, hard work ahead, but collectively, I know we're doing the right thing for our community. So with that, we are adjourned. Good night.
All ready?